Thank you. I bring to order the Select Board meeting today being Tuesday, August 29th, at 6:05 here in Memorial Hall. If you are so able, please join us and stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind folks that today's meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by Westboro TV. Do we have anyone here for open forum? No? Nope. Okay. With that, we'll move to our second agenda item, a request to concur with Town Manager appointment of Lisa Clark to the position of Treasurer/Collector.
So we have Lisa on, joining us remotely, and we are hoping that if you concur with her appointment, that she'll begin on September 11th. As you know, the position has been held currently by an interim Treasurer/Collector who's only working part-time, so really anxious to get Lisa in. Lisa comes to us from the, most recently, from the town of Marshfield as Treasurer/Collector. So I'll let her introduce herself.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for, thank you for having me via Zoom.
Welcome.
Thank you for joining us.
So you have her resume in your pocket, as well as her cover letter. We went through the whole interview process of multiple candidates and Lisa's experience and interview. You know, we've already gone through, you know, all of the background check and everything, so we're ready for Lisa to join us.
Excellent. Any questions or comments?
I'd move to concur with the Town Manager's appointment of Lisa Clark to serve as Treasurer/Collector beginning on September 11th, 2023, for a term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second. All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to join the team.
Glad to have you.
We look forward to meeting you in person, too, when you start.
Yes. Yes, thank you for letting me do this via Zoom. I really appreciate it. Would have been a long ride.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Enjoy. See you then.
All right. Okay, bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Next, we have the Economic Development Coordinator job description and classification.
Yep, so I'll start and then you can fill in. So, in, back in April, we had had an employee in the economic development position for over two years, and we felt that the, the level of work had, had changed to an economic development director position. We actually have never had anyone in, so, so, sorry, so the board voted to make it, change it from an economic development coordinator to a director-level position that was going to be effective on July 1st. We actually never had anyone in the position since it's become a director, because the incumbent in the position had, had moved on. So we, we did advertise the position as an economic development director position. We received resumes and we conducted interviews with candidates, and what we were finding is that economic development positions in general are a newer position in a lot of communities, and so you don't find a lot of folks with a, a lot of longevity in a position or a depth of experience. And so, we are interested in having the option to bring someone in as a coordinator who might need a little more support and oversight, and, and then have the option to move that, that individual in the future up to an economic development director position. We have done this before. We previously had, I think we called it a senior, a senior civil engineer in the engineering department, and then once they had attained a certain level of certification, they could move into an assistant town engineer role. So we, we see this as something similar, where we have the opportunity to mentor someone and potentially develop them into a director-level position. So we have talked to the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, Todd Alexander, about this, and he's in agreement, and as well as Fred Leonardo, who is the person who oversees that position as the Community Development Director. So we're asking the board to add back the economic development coordinator position so that we have the option of employing someone at that level.
Thank you. And although there's two, there's now two job descriptions, there's only one job opening.
Correct.
Any questions?
Yeah, so I, I would guess I would just add, I mean, I appreciate the process that the Town Manager and others as named have gone through to come to this position. I, you know, I would still like to see the person hired be at the director level. I think where we're at is a town and the sophistication of our, you know, the, the matters before the, the Economic Development Committee and certainly within the Community Development Department require that level, I think. If we can't find that person, we can't, so I think that this, I support the, the description, but I would hope that we continue to press on to find someone at kind of that higher level if we can. So, that's, you know, Kristi and I have kind of talked about that. I just want to share that thought with the board, but I fully support the flexibility that this, having these two options makes sense.
So I just had a question. By looking at what was in the packet, it doesn't look like there were any changes made to the old coordinator position, so it is really just bringing that back, us approving it?
Right.
Okay.
I guess, I can make a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll move to add the economic development coordinator position to the classification pan, plan, grade H5, with a note that only one of the two economic development positions may be filled at a time, and further to approve the economic development coordinator job description.
Second. Any comments? No? All those in favor? Five to zero. Okay. Next, we have requests for appointments. Christina Allen to the Community Preservation Committee and Brad Huff to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Yeah, so if I could take the first one. So as the board knows, we, the town passed the Community Preservation Act. It now is time to establish that committee, and Christina Allen was part of the exploratory committee to establish the, to bring forward the CPA to the town. You have her information in the package. She's got a lot of experience that crosses over from affordable housing, as well as historical preservation. So I think she'll be a great fit as the, one of the two members to be appointed as, at-large members. So, I would move to appoint Christina Allen to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to end June 30, 2025.
Second it?
Okay.
All those in favor? Five to zero.
Yep. I, I guess, I, it's nice to see Mr. Huff's name. I believe he had applied to be part of the Golf Club Committee, if I recall correctly, and obviously, he's an active member of the town, already driving the senior center bus, or one of the buses as a bus driver. So, I would move to appoint Bradbury Huff to the Veterans Advisory Board for a term to end June 30, 2024.
Second it? Nope. We'll let Cela decide. Okay. All those in favor? Five to zero. All right. Thank you very much.
It's great to continue to see some new names come forward.
Yes.
Great.
Next, we have a request to place a sign on public property, the golf club charging stations from Sustainable Westboro.
So I think we're running a little bit ahead. I'm not sure if Peter Flynn was planning to attend. I'm happy to talk through it, unless you want to wait.
Is it Peter or Jeff?
Jeff, sorry. Thank you.
We can wait a minute.
Oh, he's not coming. Okay. All right. Never mind. So, as you can see in your packet, Section 7, Article 46 of the town bylaws require approval of the Select Board in order to place signs on town property. So we do allow the placement of signs across from the Good Shepherd Church, and then also we have the electronic sign board at Lyman Street. But any additional placement of signage needs to be approved by this board. So, the request was to put the sign that's in your packet related to asking folks who have electric vehicles to be, to display their electric vehicles at the upcoming electric vehicle fair. And so, the request is to put them at the, at the current EV charging stations at the Country Club, in hopes that folks who are charging will see that and then potentially sign up. So, that's, that's the request. There's an example of the flyer in your packet.
So, I'm supportive of this. I, I think it makes sense. I understand it's a town-related event, so I would move to allow Sustainable Westboro to display two signs as, a maximum of two signs as presented on the property located at 121 West Main Street. Those signs to be removed on Monday, October 2nd.
Second thought?
Okay, quick question. So we had two proposals here.
Oh.
I think one was a 24-by-18 lawn sign, and the other was to put two, or to put two eight-and-a-half-by-elevens on the charging units. Do we have a preference?
I, I would just defer to them, whatever they think would work best in that space. I'm not opposed to either one of them. Matter of fact, I would suggest one on the EV station and maybe the stand as well, because you want to get the traffic going by, plus you want to get people who are actually using EV chargers. So, I'm not opposed to both.
So I would, so I would amend a maximum of two signs, lawn sign and/or an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven attached to the actual chargers, but a maximum of two.
So not three.
Sounds good.
I'm supportive of that. I guess the question I had was that the lawn sign, would it be, assuming it's to be two-sided, but it would be somewhat posted next to the EV charger, so it's not going to be out on the road, is my assumption.
I think it would be on the golf course side of the, of the sidewalk. Yeah, that would be my expectation.
Yep. Do we want that part of the, if it's, so to further amend that, to, that the lawn sign would be in near proximity to the charging stations on the golf club property?
Second it? Okay. Questions? All those in favor? Five to zero. Next, we have the intent layout Quick Farm Road as a public way and referral to Planning Board.
Yep, so the, so the board is being asked to, to, to vote your intent to lay out the public way. So the Quick Farm Road, you might remember, was on one of your agendas a little while ago, in speaking with town council and working with the town engineer. We've identified the steps to the process that we, have been laid out in the memo for you. So, the first step in that process is your intent to lay out Quick Farm Road and to send information onto the Planning Board, then the Planning Board will review it, and ultimately, this will go to town meeting. And then, once all of that has gone through, then we'll, then you'll need to vote to accept the fee in Quick Farm Road and sign an acceptance of the deed. So, your, this is the very first step in the process, and it's your step to take. And you have in your packet both an example of what we would send to the Planning Board, conveying your intent, and then also the motion.
I would move that the Select Board vote its intention to lay out Quick Farm Road as a public way. All is shown in a plan entitled Acceptance of, Acceptance Plan of Roadway and Easements Quick Farm Road in Westboro, Massachusetts, owned by Casa Investments, Inc., dated January 7th, 2022, revised through August 31st, 2022, prepared by Thompson Liston Associates, Inc., which plan is on file with the town clerk, and to forward this vote and the plan to the Planning Board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to General Law Chapter 41, Section 81G and 81I.
Any comments? Questions?
No, just a comment. That plan looks comprehensive. School buses are already traversing the road.
Pretty standard action.
Very standard. Years ago, there was an issue with the sidewalk construction on that road that was adjoining roads by the developer. Those have been corrected.
Okay. Thank you.
Years and years ago.
All those in favor? Five to zero. Okay. Next, we have an update on the Conservation Assistant Job Description and Classification Plan.
In your packet, you have a red line draft of the job description with a few updates. We currently have a vacancy in that position, and as you are now used to, we took the opportunity to review the job description. We have a new Conservation Director who has come on board since we last updated the job description, and in addition to a few tweaks in terms of clarifying some of the responsibilities, we're also looking to increase the hours up to a full 40-hour week position from the current 32. Just to clarify, we are able to do that within the existing budget for, in the community development salary budget. This is a union position, so we've shared the proposed changes with the union, and your vote, if the board votes to amend the job description, we just, it would be with the union's approval as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do have one question. On the red line version, let's see here, there was an addition of assist and grant-related activities, and I just wanted to make sure, this is very broad. Is that just assistant grant-related activities relative to the conservation assistant, or is it a broader expectation there?
No, it's within the conservation division.
Okay.
There was also a memo in your packet from the Conservation Director.
It's very helpful. Answered my questions, I would have had those.
Yeah, that was very helpful. That was it.
Okay. All right, great. Any further?
I would move to approve the amendments to the Conservation Assistant job description, and further to amend the classification plan to reflect an increase in hours from 32 to 40 hours per week.
Second it? All those in favor? Five to zero. All right. Thank you very much. And next, we have the Lake Chauncey study results and next steps from our Conservation Director.
You can go ahead and plug in, and it should start.
Good evening. So I've been asked to come in and speak with you about the water quality analysis that we're proposing for Lake Chauncey. Can you hear me, Anna?
Not really.
If you can pull it closer, I think. Is that better?
Yeah, yeah.
Or do you want me to use the other one? Is the other one better?
That one's fine.
It's okay? Okay.
Oh, you want to introduce yourself, Tiffany?
Jennifer Miller, the Conservation Director. It's hard to believe. I've already been here for about seven months, and I feel like I've, I've started to get a good sense of the priorities here in the community and the different projects that are taking place and that we want to move forward through the strategic plan and some of the other guiding documents that the town has. So, I don't want to bore you too much with the technical aspects, but I do have a couple of slides just to kind of talk about what the water quality issues are and next steps. So, whether it's Lake Chauncey or one of the other water bodies here in town, I'm sure you've seen from time to time, they kind of get this green scum on the water, especially when we get into the warmer weather. Maybe not so much this year, because it's been pretty cool, and we also have had a lot of rain that's helped disperse that. But it's a, a green, a blue-green algae or cyanobacteria, and these bacterias occur naturally in the water, and it's kind of like many things in life, moderation is good, but when they accumulate in high amounts, then we get these algal blooms, and they just grow exponentially. And then, once those algal blooms occur, whether it's because of warm weather, or sunlight, or excess nutrients, which is the case with Lake Chauncey, it becomes a human health risk because of those toxins that the algae gives off and those bigger accumulations. So it can cause, for both humans and pets, it can cause skin irritation, it can cause asthma-related breathing issues. Even ingesting small amounts can cause gastrointestinal problems, and it's, has the biggest effect on kids and pets, because they're smaller than the rest of us. So for Lake Chauncey in particular, there have been multiple years where there's been an issue out there. In 2019, they, several departments got together, Conservation, Recreation, and Board of Health, and put together a proposal with Solitude Lake Management to start treating, I'm sorry, in 2020. In 2019, they actually had to close the beach down and cancel swim lessons because the algal blooms were so bad. So 2020, 2021, and 2023, this summer, Solitude has been doing the lake treatment, which is a copper sulfate treatment. It's a widely-used method to deal with the algae growth, and it's even used in drinking water supplies in other communities. But it's expensive. It's $10,000 to $20,000 a year. It's a short-term Band-Aid. And so while it's effective in the near term, it doesn't really give us the long-term solution that we're going to want. 2022, or 2022, we didn't treat the lake because we were doing the initial study, which was a more holistic, comprehensive look at both internal and external components, but mainly focused on internal. So a lot of sampling in the lake that was done. So that comprehensive analysis, we just got back beginning of 2023, I think a month or two after I got here, and it gave us some really good information in terms of, we've got some, what we call the thermal stratification going on in the lake, which is no, which is not a big surprise, because the lake is pretty shallow, and when you have a shallow water body, you tend to get that stratification in the warmer months. There are a lot of dissolved solids, again, not a huge surprise, given the fact that it's a fairly-developed area. Even though there might be quite a bit of open space around Lake Chauncey, the input that we have going into the system, either overland or through stormwater, infrastructure adds a lot of dissolved solids to that water body. And then, total phosphorus, the same thing, because it's a developed area, we would expect to see some higher phosphorus levels. And again, that only compounds the algal bloom issues. The total nitrogen was pretty high as well. And so again, I don't want to bore you with all the technical details, but what was found in that 2022 study is not super surprising. And the next kind of steps that we need to take a look at is how, how do we fix this problem? Okay, yes, we, the results, what we found through the analysis and the sampling was kind of what we expected, but how do we fix this? So, part of understanding how we fix it is understanding the stormwater components. So we have both point source contributors, which is, you have a direct discharge pipe, so from a wastewater treatment plant or a factory, you have direct discharge. And then you have the non-point source pollution, which would be rural areas, which are more overland flow, and you have quite a bit of that around Lake Chauncey with all the open space and the athletic fields and some of the agricultural fields. And then you have areas that are urban or suburban in nature, and even though they might not directly, but Lake Chauncey, the stormwater systems do feed from some of those areas into Lake Chauncey and have an effect. So just taking an aerial look, you can see, again, that there are some open space areas to the north and to the west, and then, as you get further down to the southern end, you have a lot more development. And those little yellow dots that you can see are part of the stormwater infrastructure. And even though that might seem fairly limited when you look at a bigger overview of the town, as far as like how much stormwater infrastructure is right there on that eastern and southern side, you have to remember that they're feeding a further extent. So we have to look at the entire watershed. So the next step, the next natural step would be for us to look at the watershed. So, instead of just concentrating on sampling in the lake, we need to look outside the lake and see where our bigger, biggest contributors are. And so that watershed analysis that we're looking to do will develop, help us develop a very site-specific watershed model to analyze the land use and look at the stormwater infrastructure and septic systems. So sometimes, fixing those external components, like the stormwater infrastructure, adding in some additional filtration can be pretty costly and expensive, so that might not be the avenue that we want to pursue, but we kind of have to know what we're working with in order to come up with the solutions. So it'll take, drill it down to really a very specific watershed model, and then we'll start looking at where are our influences to, specifically to Lake Chauncey, and are there origins that we can fix? In other words, let's say, for example, there's an agricultural field that's a major contributor. Can we work with that property owner to put some measures in place? And then, again, we can look at the town infrastructure, so the structural controls. There's a lot of grant funding out there right now for infrastructure improvements, so this is a good time for us to be looking at that. And then we'll also look at in-lake solutions. But before we can really invest in those in-lake solutions, we want to know what our contributors are. I think that's it.
Thank you. Questions?
So, there is no direct pipe flow from our stormwater system into Lake Chauncey, correct?
There are outlets that flow into streams or brooks, whatever terminology you want to use, that then feed into Lake Chauncey.
So it's indirect, not direct?
Yep.
Okay.
And we won't be doing actual, like wet-dry sampling with this round of this, like for this study, what we're proposing is doing a site-specific watershed model, which actually is, and, and I was doubtful at first, because a scientist in me wants data, but in speaking with some of the, the stormwater engineers, it's much more definitive to look at the watershed as a whole, because your individual wet-dry samples can be very skewed, just depending on, especially like if you look at this year, we've had so much rain, they might show low bacteria loads or low phosphorus loads, and give us skewed data for sampling now versus sampling last summer. So even within a season, or within a couple-year time period, you might not be getting great data, and it might skew how you look at the watershed versus this site-specific model.
Yeah, just a question on, you're just looking at the town property that abuts Chauncey Lake. Do you know, or do we know, if there are any treatments being done on the soccer fields that might be contributing to this as well? I don't know what we do as far as maintenance on the grass up there and whatnot, but if we're adding nitrogens to it, I would imagine that would cause potential problem in the runoff.
Yeah, so I agree with you. And that's kind of part of the conversation that I had with Woodard and Curran, who put together the proposal for us, was, well, I, I want, I want the data of where it's coming from, and I can't do that without samples. And their feedback was, well, you know, we're, the, we'll work to create the model, and in creating the model, we input the land areas, the land uses for, say, agricultural fields or sports fields, assuming they're all real turf, that would have a contribution. And then, they'll go back and look specifically and say, okay, if we've got 50 acres of athletic fields and 100 acres of agricultural fields, what are our inputs look like from those? And I was actually surprised to find out that the inputs from leaf litter on roadways is a bigger contributor, and has like a higher coefficient in the models than the athletic fields and the agricultural fields.
Interesting. Yeah, I guess my question was kind of also towards headed, towards is the, is there anything we can do proactively? I completely support what you're, you're talking about here, but is there anything we can do proactively, knowing the, you know, the contributors natural or otherwise that are causing this, that we could do, you know, as a community, say, hey, we're not going to fertilize the soccer fields, as an example, or we're going to make sure yard waste, to your point, leaves are, you know, kept away, or, you know, best practices type of stuff that we could...
Well, I think, so that's the idea that, out of this watershed analysis, is that we would get some recommendations of our, where we can get the most bang for our buck, so to speak. Like, where do we make the biggest difference in terms of the inputs that we're putting into the lake itself? They'll also look at the ratio of the watershed to the lake, in terms of volumes. The lake is a much, if it is a much smaller volume, or volume than the watershed has, we're kind of forcing a lot of nutrients into a system that can't handle it. And so that helps them figure out, in terms of in-lake treatments, what, what makes the most sense, what will be the most effective overall. sense, what will be the most effective over a long term.
Sure.
But to your question, I think, you know, it's one of those things of, maybe it's not, we don't fertilize, but maybe we need to make sure we're fertilizing correctly, or not over-fertilizing, fertilizing at the right times. And it may be that that's really not the big issue, and we may find that it's actually from a different area in town.
Thank you.
Any other?
So just looking through the proposal, if I saw it right, is it, I may have missed parts of it, but it's on 27.5, is that the amount for what we're going, the article for town meeting will be for 27.5 to basically do that study, is that accurate?
Correct. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the presentation, the information in advance. Just a couple questions. What is, you mentioned in your presentation, a dissolved solid. Like, can you give us some examples of what that is? I don't want to imagine what it might be, so that's what I'm asking for.
Well, it's that and other stuff. So dissolved solids can be anything from broken-down leaf litter, particulate matter. So it's, if you had, like, you took a sample from the lake and you see all the floating matter in it, it's a little bit of everything, right? It's anything from sand from roadway treatments, to leaf litter, to, yes, potentially failing septic systems that make its way.
Sure.
And then from wildlife, geese, beavers, those are usually pretty big contributors to water quality.
Okay.
Geese are big.
Yeah, they're all over the place.
Yes. And swans. Did you have a follow-on to that?
No, no, you go.
Okay. So what is the period of analysis for this particular study? Like, so when would it, if approved, tell me, when would it start? How long does it go for? And I guess as part of that, would we anticipate still doing the copper sulfate treatments during this period, at least to kind of keep things at bay and the lake usable?
So that's what we opted to do for the summer, was to still do the treatments, so that it would still be, you know, not knowing that we're going to have this extremely rainy summer, to just still do the treatments, so that the lake would still be, you know, offer swimming opportunities, right? Recreational opportunities. This analysis itself is more, it doesn't involve actual sampling, so you can still do the copper sulfate treatments, let's say, in fiscal year, or into, they start in May, so May of 2024 through October of 2024. We could still move forward with that if we don't have an additional strategy in place by that point, which I think is, you know, fairly likely that we'll still be figuring out what the best approaches are for a long-term solution.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I would think so. I mean, you've got multiple owners, you've got multiple layers of potential contributors. So when you say there's no sampling, just because I'm not a scientist, so is this like a theoretical model?
Yeah. So they'll, so they'll actually refine, so this slide shows the watershed outlined in red.
Yep.
So they'll actually refine that. And the aerial underneath is a little, I would say, a little outdated, because there's definitely some more development in there that doesn't show in the southern part. But they'll refine that watershed so that we're really capturing everything that is a contributor. And, and then we'll, in taking that model, they'll overlay the land uses, and then look at septic systems in the area. I know most of Westboro is on town sewer, but for areas that still have septic, we'll want to make sure we're capturing those, and we've looked at any potential issues that could be contributing.
Sure.
And then the stormwater infrastructure, because again, like those, you know, where you have either suburban or more urbanized areas that are feeding into that system through stormwater, those are going to be some pretty big contributors because of that leaf litter on the roadway and salting operations, things that really, you know, we, we have just as a matter of being a developed community.
Sure.
So yeah, it doesn't involve necessarily the data. And I had a hard time with that, too, when I first got it back. I'm like, what do you mean, there's no data?
Yeah.
But this is, putting the model together is going to give us a lot more opportunity to refine it and focus in on the areas that are causing the issues. And they really look at those coefficients of assigning the numbers to the different types of land uses tend to be more accurate in coming up with solutions to manage it.
Okay. So on page, it was figure one in the report, it's page three, there was a, there's a graphic of sort of the lake, and then there's some arrows, like it talks about stream flow direction. Could you just, in one of the, just maybe using what you have up here, because I know you don't have this as a slide, I guess, in a very basic question, is not clear to me, other than maybe on, I guess, the, trying to get directionally, on the southern side, it looks like maybe there's a direct flow into Lake Chauncey, on the southern side, is that, whereas on the, everywhere else, maybe not? Is that, is that a correct understanding?
It is. Well, so there's two, there's two inputs in the south?
Yep, I see that.
One close to the beach?
Yep, that area, yep.
And then there's one in the northwest corner.
And that's an input? I couldn't see that.
Yeah, that's flowing south through Marsher, yeah.
Okay.
That's actually an outlet. You're talking about the upper-left-hand corner? Those are, the upper left and the upper center are both outlets.
Jen, is that correct?
No. That's what it says in the notes here.
I think, yeah, so it says outlet, and I think it's supposed to say inlet, sorry. The other one is an outlet.
Oh, okay. In your writing, there it is. Okay, sorry, I didn't, I was looking for something in the key. Okay. Okay. And so obviously, just that is a basic element, is part of that analysis, is understanding kind of, okay.
Yeah. And it doesn't mean that we can't, you know, as we move forward with, as it takes shape in terms of the treatment, that we can't do some additional sampling into those inlets.
Sure.
The outlet doesn't, we wouldn't, you know, really be focused on that, but in the inlets.
Sure.
Especially if those have stormwater inputs into them. But it's not going to be our initial focus, will be the watershed analysis. And that gets back to, I kind of glossed over this at the top of the slide, but if we're looking at how do we treat it for the long term, we're looking at either inactivating that phosphorus through an alum treatment, or oxygen, like an oxygenation type of system, those aerators that you see. And, you know, Lake Chauncey's a pretty big water body, so we're talking about a lot of aeration. And so either of those is pretty expensive, we're talking in the $200,000-plus range.
Sure.
And we, if we're going to invest money in that, we want it to be long-lasting, right?
And impactful, right?
Right. And so we could potentially look at 15 to 20 years of treatment with either of those, but if we're putting a lot of load into that system still, with the phosphorus and the nitrogen, then it's going to decrease that efficacy greatly. It could be 10 years instead of 20.
Sure. So I did notice as well, and it was figure three, page five in the report, that there are, if I understand it correctly, a number of certified vernal pools, as well as potential, which I thought was interesting, kind of, well, I guess, maybe it's intuitive, but just interesting that those would sort of be coexisting, and yet we have these kind of blooms. So is, and I don't know, is the, is the lake under the jurisdiction of conservation? Or is it, like, I know we have recreation, and they sort of have the fields, and there's a select board town part of that property, but the lake itself, whose jurisdiction does that fall under?
Do you want to take it or?
Go ahead.
Okay. So conservation is more, the jurisdiction is based more on actual wetland areas, which the lake is, but we don't, our jurisdiction isn't the actual water, because water moves, our jurisdiction is land underwater. So if there's a project in this area, like, in order to move forward with any type of treatment, it would need a permit through conservation. But it's, it's the state property.
So, right, so the state is in control of the body, and so we've actually, we reached out to the state to ask them to partner with us, and they...
That's where I'm going.
So we did ask them to partner with us in the study, and, you know, so, you know, we are in contact with them. They did not partner with us financially in the study, but supported the study. So I think what our intention has been, given our initial contact with them, was to understand some of these issues, and then we are working through treatment to go back to the state with, with what we found and ask for financial help.
Yeah, I mean, it would seem to me, I'm just looking at the, one of the maps in here, you know, you've got, I mean, state land for sure, so I wasn't aware that the water, the body of water is actually state-owned, because it's a body of water? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so they own a good portion of the property around the lake, and they formally own even more property, right? So they have jurisdiction over the actual lake itself, as far as ownership, right? They own it. But anything that happens, no matter who's doing it, state, town, whatever the case may be, even if, let's say, there was a private entity bordering the lake that wanted to have a dock, it would have to go through the conservation for permitting.
Right. No, I understand that. I guess I'm sort of going to the, it's interesting how...
Who bears the cost?
Yeah, who, you know, they can own it, but yet they're not, so far, contributing other than saying, great, Westboro, go do what you need to do, or what you think you need to do, and we're supportive of that. So I, I think that we need to have some, not that we haven't, but more earnest conversations, now that we have this, the results of this study, to say, this is the direction we're going, and if there, I mean, clearly, there's a, you said there are a lot of grants out there that are being offered at the state and maybe federal level as well, but there's an interest at the state level, so you would think, sort of intuitively, that there are state entities that want to collaborate in that lift. So I think the town, you know, should be pressing hard in that area, too, for some collaboration, so. And again, I'm not saying we haven't, I'm just saying, now that we have this information, I think that before it was like, hey, we're, I understand why we went forward with it, I was very supportive of that, but now that we have this, and, you know, I quickly see this, as the red area has grown, well beyond the lake, so do the costs, so.
Yeah, and so we haven't, right, so we haven't identified the cause or the solution, and so I think that's, that was our plan, you know, once we've identified sort of the cause and the solution, to go back to the state to ask for, to partner with them. They don't have the same level of interest, and, I mean, we're the big user, right, of this, of the lake. But I'm not saying that we're not going back to them, I'm just saying that that's sort of what we've done. We've gone to them, we've talked to them about it, and so...
Well, they have their, and I forget what it is on the...
Boat ramp.
Boat ramp, yeah. Well, they have a boat ramp, but they also have the wildlife, you know, you can access it by...
Wildlife management area, McCall.
McCall, yeah, but then there's the whole...
They have the agricultural land, too.
The agricultural land, I mean, they are right there, and they use that land, and they, they oversee that land, so I just think that we're at a place where a new round of conversations is important, is what is my expectation.
Yeah, and I think that makes, and I think it absolutely makes sense, and I think what Christie said is my understanding as well, is, I mean, before we said, oh, we have algae blooms, and there's, was noted there, that happens in a lot of places. Now is the chance to say, okay, here's where it is, and if it comes, if we find out that it's all caused by our stormwater discharge, and the state's going to be like, fix it, why do we pay for that? Or if it's because we have septic systems on houses that we've permitted that are on the lake, then it's more our issue. I anticipate that because there's so much land around there, and agricultural land, that there is a strong potential that some of this will require us to have help from the state, because they're probably contributing, and I think that's where we can go in. So I think this, this to me is what we've done, these are the correct steps, and I think when you go and say, you know, yes, you own this, you know, we've done this work, but you're a major contributor, if that's what turns out to be, then we have more legs to stand on in front of them, asking for grant funding or some other help to treat.
And Patrick, maybe just as you were starting there, Patrick made the point, I mean, you know, Route 30 is a state road, right? So that is, you know, and, you know, there's, there's a lot surrounding here that, you know, is, is state contributing. And we all use those assets as well, so hopefully there's a collaborative approach here.
Yeah, and I think it's not only what are, right, we're starting to look at the watershed as a whole, so what are the contributors, and how can we implement some controls or some changes that would help with that, but also how, what is the long-term treatment, if any, that we're looking at for in the lake? And that, I think, definitely gets back to a conversation with the state, because we're talking about treating it as a whole, not just like the beach area.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, thanks very much.
One more question, sorry. So, so we completed the first study, and it, and the results were as expected, I guess, was the first study necessary in order to do the second study? I mean, it seems like the second study was always going to need to be done, because if you have an issue with your lake, it's coming from around the lake, I guess. Yeah, having only been here seven months, what was the purpose of doing one study, then the next?
So I think you need that comprehensive analysis performed in order to have, in order to move forward to this step. So the first study really looked at in terms of in the lake, because you also, you have outside contributors, but you have inside contributors, too. So at the bottom of most water bodies, you're going to have a mucky layer. You might not really have it so much at the beach edge, because we're constantly stirring that up by being in the water, but further into the lake, you're going to have that accumulated muck, and with that, you have accumulated nutrients. And as you get that thermal stratification, that temperature change allows for those nutrients to be released at a greater rate and cause those algal blooms. So it's, it's not just what are we putting into the system, what's already accumulated there, and how do we best manage, what's the best strategy to manage both of those in the most efficient way, not only in terms of being cost-effective, but also like environmentally prudent? And I think that's part of the conversation that you have with the state, too, because their focus is going to be a little bit on recreation, for sure, but they've got the boat access and everything, but they're also going to be looking at what's, is there a wildlife benefit? And so I think that's part of our strategy in talking with the state, too.
Thank you very much. I mean, I guess, just a heads up, at town meeting, everybody's going to say, why are we doing this second study? And I think you explained it very well here tonight, but that'll be the question to be answered.
Well, I think that, yeah, I mean, why you bring that up, Sean, I think that there will also be some questions, Patrick, you raised one, just around, you know, fields, and are we, as a town, contributing? So there are going to be a lot of those, but what are we doing? The answer is, we don't know, we, the town, and so that's why we're going to do this analysis, but I think there will also be some assumptions, I'm not saying they're correct or incorrect, around development that has happened around the lake, and what is that contributing, and who's responsible. So sort of anticipating that, but we, again, until we do this, we don't, we don't, we can't answer those, those questions. And there continues to be a lot of development, you know, even in kind of what I, what I think is the red area, I mean, just as I was driving by there today, you know, that's not immediately proximal to the, to the lake, so.
Yeah, and I think, too, if you look at, yes, there might be more recent development, but there are studies going back to the mid-'80s that show similar issues, similar findings, so this isn't a new problem.
Yeah, so we're just trying to help you along here in that presentation.
I took my swimming lessons there in the '70s, and there was muck on the bottom, and there still is muck on the bottom, even the swimming area.
Well, that explains a lot.
That had been there forever.
And hockamock, too.
Muck in my head. My sisters did hockamock.
Oh, there you go, that's a different discussion.
I was young enough, and they'd already moved to Chauncey.
Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is the format of the interim police chief presentation and discussion.
I think we, it was requested by members of the board to have this discussion about just what the format would be, so I don't know if you want to start, Sean, with, I guess, what I put in your packet is that this is not a finalist interview, but typically in a finalist interview, we have a list of questions, board members take turns asking the questions, and then we typically allocate an hour per finalist, which includes time for the candidate to make a brief presentation of background experience, and then Q and A at the end. Obviously, this is a little bit different, but that's just how a typical finalist interview would happen.
Yeah, and I would say, I asked Christie to put this in here, because there did seem to still be questions, even after our last meeting, about exactly what everyone thought we'd determined at our last meeting. So I just thought we, since, since we had an opportunity before interim chief minority presents to us at our next meeting, it behooved us to take a few minutes and just make sure we were all on the same page. And with that, I will take questions or comments.
Do you want to, I'll jump in. So I certainly was one of those individuals who had asked for some clarification, so appreciate that we're having this discussion tonight. So some thoughts, and I'm not throwing these out as motions, just thoughts for the board to consider as part of the process. So I do think it would be helpful, being that we are limited on time, we don't want to all be here all... So I do think it would be helpful, being that we are limited on time, we don't wanna all be here all night in that process, that, that the board, as Christie's already outlined, that we're gonna submit all the questions to Christie. But I think it's important that the board has full visibility to all the questions that are initially submitted. So we'll sort of say that's round one, understanding those are gonna be consolidated or cut down or, you know, massaged a little bit. But I, I would like to see the full list as part of kind of the packet that we, that we ultimately receive. And my thought on timing is that we, I, I don't, you know, that, I don't know how much time, Christie, if you've talked with Todd about how much time he thinks he would need for a presentation? But I'm thinking twenty minutes-ish, I don't know, I don't wanna short him on that, twenty to thirty minutes, fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes?
Yeah, I haven't talked to him about it.
Okay.
But I think that that's reasonable.
All right, well, enough time that, you know, so he doesn't feel rushed. And that, because I think with any good presentation, a lot of those questions, just like we saw tonight, right, are, are answered and, you know, asked and answered. My, my thought is that maybe we ultimately have about ten questions that are agreed upon, that hopefully cover kind of a wide range of areas, that would give each of us two minutes to ask, one, two minutes. Each of us would ask two questions. If people have specific questions they wanna ask, that's fine, I, I'm, I'm not really worried about what question I ask 'cause we're all hearing it dumb. And then I had a thought that maybe after those questions are asked, that each board member would have five minutes to have, you know, if there was a follow-up question based on a prior answer or Todd's presentation, that each individual board member could have five minutes to go through. And if there was anything left, then there would be a maximum of five minutes on a second pass through. But that we would actually go through, wouldn't be like, I would get ten minutes, it would be like five, five, five. And then if there's anything else and anyone wants to ask any clarifying questions, you get a maximum of five, so. So all told, that would be, let's say, thirty minutes for Todd, thirty minutes for the questions, roughly I was estimating. And then you have about another, so it'd be two hours in total. So I'm, I'm just putting that out as, as a thought.
Sure, um, let me say it as a, as a point of reference.
Yep.
I went back to the meeting notes from when Chief Lori was hired. And I believe his presentation and the questions associated took a total of thirty-five minutes, according to the meeting notes, for someone who had never worked in this town before. So I, I use that as a point of reference. I don't know that two hours for someone who's been working in town here for twenty-seven years is necessary.
I, I guess I would just, I guess I would say that that process is very different than the one we're going through. Because there would have been layers of, of information presented to the search committee. There were, I, I forget the, what the other entities that were used, the. Assessment Center, thank you. So I feel like this is like our first time to have that conversation. And so I would not be comfortable at all. I mean, if we could do it in thirty-five minutes, that's great, but I don't, first of all, I mean, I really wanna hear from Todd and hear his vision. And again, not unlike every presentation that I receive here as a member, oftentimes I've got a whole litany of questions. I go, oh, you know, it's already been presented, I don't, I don't need to hear my voice ask a question that's already been presented. So, you know, I, I think whether we need that additional time, I think what we agreed at our last meeting was that we would have, you know, there would be time for some follow-up. I'm just trying to put some structure around it so it doesn't get lopsided in any, you know, in any way, so.
My, my thoughts are, if interim chief minority is fifteen to twenty minutes for presentation, and then you say, you know, we have the questions we submit, they're consolidated down, it might get consolidated down to ten, maybe consolidated down to four, five, seven, depending on how many questions each of us submit and how similar they are.
Sure.
And so providing time for that, when it comes to the lightning round, I think since those are follow-up questions, I'm not sure you need five minutes to do follow-up questions. I, I, you know, if you did three minutes, you cut it down, you know, the expectation.
But I'm saying that that's asked and answered, so I'm saying, you know, so that would.
Well, the questions should be brief, right? You know, I'll work on mine.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say me too, right, right, right.
You know, but it should be, if they're follow-up questions, they should be to specific points raised or asking for clarification on specific points. I'm not, and then adding a couple rounds of that. And I think, I, I agree, thirty-five minutes probably isn't enough because we haven't had, you know, the process is different. But two hours seems also like a long time. You know, my, my thought, I'm thinking about this, this is gonna run somewhere between, you know, that we hope for an hour, it might run to an hour and a half, but sort of structure it towards that rather than expecting the full twelve.
Sure, I mean, I think just while we're on the topic, I mean, I think if we have a set, I think we're not gonna know about how many questions until we all submit them, right? So then they're kind of distilled down and it might be, you know, it might be that they're really five to seven, you know? I would hope that there's not more than ten. Again, I'm just kind of thinking about two to three minutes for response. Probably not many yeses or no responses to questions, I, I would not anticipate that. So that's kind of where you very quickly get into, you know, another, what, twenty minutes? So now you're already at fif, you know, depending upon how his presentation goes, you could be at forty to fifty minutes. And then, you know.
Then we have another.
Thirty.
Thirty to forty minutes for follow-up, I think that would be sufficient.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for the opportunity, Sean.
So I was just gonna say, yeah, I, I would certainly like to keep the processes quick and, I'll say, precise as possible. So certainly hour to an hour and a half is reasonable, I, I, I hope we don't go over that. I, I think we should certainly be able to get a good sense of the chief's perspective and his work that he's done in the town over the years in that time period, so I think that's certainly fair enough. But I, I, there are two, I guess, points I would make. I did go back and re-watch the tape from my last meeting, just to make sure I was kind of in sync as much as possible on what we all talked about and agreed to. We, we, we did agree that it wasn't just follow-up questions, so I just wanna make sure that's clear that, you know, however we decide to do it, whether it's one question at a time as we go through the, through the board, or, you know, we each get five minutes to ask as many questions as we can get through in our five minutes and then maybe get a three-minute time period to follow up later on. Because we have a follow-up question that somebody, you know, another board member had, that's, that's fine with me. And that makes a lot of sense to me. So I, 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 I don't know how we wanna do it. I'd also say that personally, I'd like to be able to answer, ask the questions that I've submitted. Because I might wanna tee up those questions in a certain way, frame them in a certain way to, to drive a conversation with, with the chief a little bit about, you know, get him to think about his answer in a, in a more contextual way. So that's also something I think we should consider as well as to, are we all gonna ask our own questions? Or are we just gonna go, "Hey, questions one through ten or one through fifteen, there's five topics, boom, boom, boom?" Or are we gonna allow us to ask our own questions?
I mean, I think if, if there's a consolidation, if his questions are similar, I provided three questions with some context before, you know, two sentences of context before the one-sentence question, right? I would, if someone's asking a similar question along those lines, I trust that in consolidation, the intent of both questions would be included. So, you know, if you and I overlap and you wanna set up, then feel free to ask the question, right? I mean, I suspect in the consolidation, that my intent in asking the question will be covered as well. So I'm not as worried about saying I haven't read the questions I submitted or read them. I'm looking for information on some specific topics and directions. And I would expect, I hope, that those same topics and considerations are on my, among the select board members as well, so.
But you're not opposed to that, I'm not hearing opposition to allowing each board member to ask the question, questions that they've submitted.
If it's not, if it hasn't been consolidated, if it's been consolid, if, if three of us submit similar questions and it becomes one question, then do we flip coins and pick who asks it or does it really matter? That's my, that's my point. If there's a question that's standalone from someone that hasn't been consolidated, I know problems with that individual asking the question. But if it's been, if the question's evolved because three people or four people or five asked, asked a similar question, I'm not sure who's asking it at that point is necessarily an issue or how do we determine who asked it? I think history has shown that when we go through this process and the question list is developed, that it's, it's pretty clear that if there's a, if it's asked and the answer comes in and there's a contextual component that you want more information about, you have the follow-up question you have to ask individually. But, but that's part of the point of the follow-up, you know, say, in your, in your answer to this question, you said X, there's some context, you know, how do you respond?
So perhaps the filtration of the questions shouldn't involve elimination of any questions unless they are of, I don't know, legal concern or something to that nature. Allow all the questions to be on our list and once we get to a particular, you know, I, I, it's my turn and I see a list of five questions, that let's just say all five of them are on the same subject, I can look through and say, "Hey, there's mine, it's my turn, I'm gonna ask the question the way I framed it." Versus a consolidation of those five into a single question, which may not be the way I intended the question.
I think, I think that makes it overly complex.
Okay, well, actually, it simplifies it.
If we're not, if we're not sure which questions are gonna be asked.
It absolutely simplifies it tremendously, actually. Because it allows all the questions to remain on the list and you can just choose what you want.
I think the thought is we're asking all the questions on the list. So if the same question's on the list five times, then we're asking the same question five times.
And if there's.
Yeah, it just boils down to this.
If there's a question, I would expect them to be consolidated into one question.
So are we only able to ask the question or are we able to provide the context before the question?
I, I provided the sentence or two of context to each of my questions that I expect.
And that's not gonna be filtered out of the process?
I expect, I expect as there's consolidation, that is, will be used to decide whether or not to consolidate or not. And if they are consolidated, to understand. I also will expect, as past history, if my context or question isn't clear, I'm gonna get an email or a phone call from Christie or can ask him for clarification so they can do the, they can do the work.
So I think that that's why that content, that first, you know, whatever we submit, cut and paste, here are the questions and here are the context.
Right, you can have that.
You know, I think having that, then I go, and I don't care who asked the question or I don't need to know, that can be blinded to me, I don't care about that, but understand that, you know, be like, you know, 'cause it's sort of like getting an email, right? You maybe retone, you're not sure the context, that to me is essential. Because it will, I think then, it will certainly give me an appreciation for, as those get pared down and cleaned up, filtered, whatever the right word is, that I'm like, okay, like, I get it now. I get kind of the intent of all of these, if someone chose to provide context and here's the question and, and it, and it covers it. Who asked the question, I personally, I, I don't really care. To me, these are board questions, they're not Shelby's questions, they're not Patrick's, what have you. This is my view, so, you know, I don't, you can ask.
Well, I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example where I can see that this breaks. And I agree with most of what you just said, but the example would be if I give a scenario in my question, we also met the same question, the same thing, but I give a particular scenario because that's something that I'm very curious about under a certain situation. But that gets stripped out or it doesn't get asked by somebody else, I've lost that context in that scenario.
If, if you feel that the consolidated question doesn't capture that scenario, then in the follow-up, you can say, "You were asked a question, X." Here's a specific scenario that relates to it, here's a question about that specific scenario.
Does that change your response or what?
Does that change your response or further detail?
Okay, I can buy that.
You've got the, you've got the.
Yep, so, so I guess we'll be provided the entire list.
Yeah.
The original list, but also the pared-down, filtered version as well, okay? That makes sense to me. Now, but is, so do we also land on, like, we're just gonna go one by one till we get to the, like, one question, one question, one question until we get to the end or, okay? Not time, not time slots, like, not like we each get eight minutes or something? Or is that a better way to do it, where I ask?
I think we're rolling through the questions and then once we finish those, then I guess everybody gets an opportunity for.
Additional questions.
Their specific follow-up.
Okay.
Well, I think, and I think what we agreed to, so I don't know that I understood Patrick before. I thought that, and Shelby said it, kind of follow-ups to questions. I thought that the decision last time, it was, we're submitting all the questions, not that any of us have, okay, here's, I'm submitting five questions and I got five over here and I'm gonna use my five minutes to ask those five 'cause I don't want anybody else to see them before I, on the board, to bring that, bring that up.
Yeah, no, that, that is not my understanding. Here are your questions, you're submitting them, they're shared with the town manager. Ultimately, all the board members will see that through that process, we're not gonna discuss this in advance, but they will be pared down to be, okay, these are all questions about social justice, I don't know, pick a topic. About body one campers, whatever it is, right? And, and then we have the context, 'cause we have draft one, and then we have the actual list, the final cut questions. That's my understanding, and anything that isn't on that list, I'm gonna operate on, you know, that it's kind of off the cuff, right? It's like, "I didn't quite understand that, can you clarify that?" Or, you know, Alan did that.
Well, it was an aspect of my question, but wasn't made, so there's a follow-up.
So I'll just, I'll just remind again, I, I went back and I looked at the tape from our last meeting and I'll just remind, when that topic came up, I specifically said, gave the scenario of there could be a situation where I've submitted my questions and in the two weeks prior, after that, I may have somebody who says, "Patrick, what about this?" you know, topic now, which is very relevant. Or I might even see the other board members' questions on the initial draft and say, "Hey, that reminds me of something else that's not a follow-up question to that, but it also brings up another question that I want." I would like the ability to make sure that I can ask those questions above and beyond the list that were provided. I would also say, Ian, and I just, I, again, I looked at your comments, you know, very closely. You said, "Under the courtesy and trust of the board, in the best interest of the process," that we could ask those additional questions. And, and absolutely, I'm not looking to, I think the term was trap or, or, you know, create trap questions here. I'm looking to ask questions that are relevant and meaningful to the town and the community. And I think that those don't always come directly in a list that was pre-thought of two, three, four weeks in advance. I think those come as the conversation is occurring. It might spark another question I have that's related but not clarifying. And I just don't think we should lock ourselves in to, to just, you know, this, again, it's not the same as going through an irregular process of a panel of, you know, multiple candidates. This is our only opportunity to speak to this candidate, only opportunity, before we, we vote. And I think it's really important that we provide the board members the opportunity to ask those questions.
Christie, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we've gone through prior panels before, we've gone through the process where we've basically agreed on the que, basically gone through the process, the questions submitted, agreed they were passed out and those are the questions we asked. We asked all the candidates the same questions. So I, I.
That makes sense.
I understand what you said, you know, out of courtesy, we wanna get the questions answered. I just wanna make sure that we kind of follow the process. And, and I guess taking a step back, I, I, I think that hour or hour and a half, I, I love to say an hour, I think it's probably gonna go hour and fifteen to an hour and a half. I don't think we should go longer than an hour and a half. I'm not sure that we'll need the full half, hopefully we don't need the full half hour of follow-up and all that for all of us to have that, plus additional, I think, five minutes you said after that. But, but I, I think we wanted to keep this tight to the process. That's the process that's been followed, whether, if, if we did this through, you know, a regular search, we would do it and would all agree on comments. And in those processes, it wasn't that I said at the end, "Great, but now I got my real questions that I wanna ask to the candidate." That's not how the process has worked in the past.
No, I get it, but you also have to keep in mind that this is a new process. We have not promoted since we put in the staffing study. We have not promoted through that process a major position in the town that I'm aware of. So this is a new process and that's why it's important that we do define this out as to how we see this working. So again, I, I, I go back to that trust statement that you asked at our last meeting. I'm not looking to cause an issue of trust here at all. This is affording the board members, all of us, the ability to ask questions. Never in my professional history had I ever told anybody, on all the people I've ever interviewed, what questions they can ask, other than giving them guidance to say what questions you can't ask for legal reasons and other issues that might be relevant. But I want people to ask those questions and this is my only opportunity to ask. So I, I just think it's important that we allow some flexibility here. It's not a panel, it's not, we're not interviewing five people. We don't have to worry about asking the same questions to be fair to. We don't have to worry about asking the same questions to be fair to multiple candidates. That's not the situation here. We gave up that, I think, when we decided to go with the promotional process.
If it's helpful, the minutes from the last meeting are in your packet with the motion.
Thank you.
Which, so it's on, so I can read it for you. So it's the select board marshal, member Marshall moves that the select board move forward with the promotional process as follows. Interim chief come forward to make a presentation to the select board. The select board will submit questions in advance to the town manager and assistant town manager to format and consolidate, and the presentation will be made before an appointment is actually issued. And then it was taken advice, select board member Edinburgh.
Yeah, I, I mean, I feel like, oh, good, sorry.
I would say, and, and while I see that this is structurally correct, the follow-up conversation to after the motion and leave was that trust conversation. So that's why I think it's really important that we, again, respect that we're all here in the best interest of the town. Okay?
Well, and there, there is some further, there was an amended motion further down there.
Yeah.
Yep, then it was removed.
So, I mean, I guess, Patrick, you've mentioned two, two scenarios of concern. One was listening to the answers, listening to the presentation, listening to the pre-submitted questions and answers. It may trigger a different question, a follow-up question, that's not necessarily clarifying or directly related. I don't see an issue asking those questions.
Okay.
Because that is follow-up. You know, you answered this question, that brings up another point, here's a question related to it, right? The other scenario was, you know, we're, we've been asked to submit our questions this week, and you're saying, well, what if someone comes to you in the next two weeks and says, oh, you know, here's another question, you're like, hmm, you didn't think of it, you don't know, you don't know yet if someone else thought about it, because the packet hasn't been published. I guess I would, you know, prefer that you forward it to, you know, to the pack manager, and that would get, you know, it would get included in the packet. And we'd see it as one of the raw questions. If there's time for me to consider for consolidation, fine. If not, it could be listed in the packet as a, as a question that was not considered in consolidation. And then, yeah, we would all have an opportunity to see it before the meeting, and it could still be asked.
Yeah, because we typically don't get, I'm sorry, we don't get our, we, not, we get our packets, you know, Thursday, Friday-ish, so unless it's a late-breaking question over the weekend, I mean, like, I would think that we'd be pretty tight on all, it's a good suggestion.
I'll just ask that, if a question like that comes up over the next couple of weeks, like, it gets forwarded, gets added to the packet.
Yeah, and I would think even if it does, even if it comes up over the weekend, it comes up on Monday, I would still submit it and allow the town manager to say, this thing is different than one that's been seen as something, and.
Forward it on.
Forward it on.
Well, again, we're gonna have the entire list in front of us, draft, every question that's been submitted, plus whatever the whittled-down list is in front of us, so we can always go back and ask any of those questions if they are of a different context to them or whatnot. So, Alan, I think what you've proposed here, in your infinite wisdom, is, makes, I can accept.
Fine, very fine.
I, I can, I can accept that. What I will also just say is, you know, while I certainly wanna keep this process, it's, it's already been, we're on our fourth meeting discussing this, I, I certainly wanna keep the process as streamlined as possible, and certainly hour, hour and a half be terrific. But again, in my experience, you know, I've never hired a senior-level person that the interview process was in three hours or even multiple days with multiple panels of people, right? So I don't think we should necessarily shoehorn ourselves into saying, oh, we're gonna stop at an hour and a half, right? So I just, I, it just, that's the sense I'm getting is, like, we're gonna, we're gonna do it this way and be done in an hour and a half.
No, no, I, I think it's sort of setting a general framework for what we expect.
Yeah, that's fine, general framework. That's all I'm looking for. I wanna understand what the ground rules are, so to speak. So obviously, I stay within them, and we all, we all understand what's gonna happen here. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the board, this specific board has been very good about, are there any more questions? Are we starting to kind of beat a dead horse here? Can we move on? I, I think that, I'm, I am very comfortable that we will get a sense of, everyone has had an opportunity to ask their questions, the interim chief has been able to respond to them, and then, you know, we can close that process. I do think one of the key elements of that process, though, right, is, is going to a vote that evening. We, that should be part of an understanding of that being the process. So I just didn't wanna leave.
Part of our agenda, too.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that, is that the board's anticipation?
That'd be my anticipation, yes.
Okay, okay.
Sean, can I ask?
Thanks.
Sorry, actually, a little bit unrelated, but I just wanna make sure, and Christie, I'm looking at you, and I know interim chief's here, but we talked a lot about presentation, we had a lot of ideas floating around, but not in the motion, it was just like, we're gonna ask him to give a presentation, I guess. My question to the board is, do we wanna be any more specific about the presentation we're asking for? And I think we've talked presentation on his vision of the department, whatever, and I think I'm fine if that's where we wanna go, but is there anything that, you know, specifically we as a board want to ask him or guide him in terms of shaping up a presentation? I'm not sure if he's reached out to you, Christie, and I'm not sure that he needs that from us either, but I just.
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked a little bit about the vision for the department and then maybe the first, some touching on the first ninety days, which is a typical question that we've asked candidates going into a department head role, what the transition would look like. I don't know if he wants to add anything, or if you want him to add anything.
Yeah, I'd love to hear that.
Hello, Todd Minardi, your interim chief. I will just tell you, my plan for the presentation, without any guidance previously, was to simply give a quick overview of my personal life, my time here in Westboro, my professional experience here in Westboro, some of the accomplishments I've had up to this point, some of the challenges I think we're facing moving forward, some of the things I've worked on in the last two months, and what my vision for the future is. I'll try to keep it under a half an hour.
Perfect.
I think that sounds perfect.
Yeah.
It's all three things I just wrote down.
I, I think you should, chief, I think you should use the time that you have. I don't, no one's gonna be going, you know, I, I.
There's no, there's no.
I might.
We wanna hear from you, and honestly, I think, I think the board needs to have an appreciation. I think the public wants to hear from the person being interviewed. They get to hear from us a lot. And while our port, our questions are important, I think it's very unprompted, his presentation is, you know, is an essential part of this interview. So.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
So I guess in review, is the motion we made last meeting, is everybody still okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I just had a suggestion as well. This is just a suggestion on location. I, I didn't know, I was just thinking about this. I think it would be more comfortable, certainly, Chief Minardi can tell us other ways, if it's possible to have it at the Great Hall so he could sit down as opposed to standing for the interview.
Yeah.
I, I just thought it would be more comfortable for him.
My, my only thought is the acoustics and the camera coverage is better in this room.
Except for these are half fogged over. You watch the, like, half, they have them blurry on the left-hand side, so, but, yeah.
For, I mean, perhaps the compromise, I mean, I mean, he just sits here. We make sure that, yeah, I mean, but I do think sitting for his presentation, if he chooses, if he chooses to, that's fine, if he wants to stand, that's fine, too.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think just a couple, a final comment, he, for those watching, he did give an interview with Karen Henderson on Westboro TV. I saw it already has a few hundred views, which is more than our meetings get. So, you know, if you're interested in learning about our interim chief, please catch up with him on Westboro TV.
Next item, next item.
Yeah.
Fall town meeting, Warren.
So you have in your packet version three of the fall town meeting, Warren, sent out on August twenty-second. There are seventeen articles. I just wanted to go through them to get sense from the board about what presentations you'd wanna see over the next few meetings. The first article is prior year bills. I'm, should knock on wood here, we don't have any currently, but we have it on here in case we do need them, so there's no presentation to be made because we don't have one currently. Article two is what we've talked about previously, both the finance committee and with the select board, and that's the additional funding for the, the balance of what is needed to hire the four additional firefighters in this fiscal year. That's a reminder that one of them was included in the budget, so was voted on already at the annual town meeting. One was, is funded through the hundred thousand dollars that was appropriated from ARPA. We expect that there's a, will be a balance remaining from that ARPA fund, which would be, would be applied to the additional two, but understanding that we would need another about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to fully hire those four that were requested by the chief. So, maybe if it's okay, I'll just ask, if, do you want the chief to come back to discuss this, or do you feel like you've had that presentation?
I feel like we've had the presentation. I would offer it to the chief if there's updated information that he feels speaks to the increased need or the urgency, then yes, then welcome to come back.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't need to request.
I don't either.
The reasons for it and how he's.
Article three is the adjustment to the finance department budget, which we had also talked about at a previous meeting, and this is really related to the amount owed to our retiring finance director when she retires at the end of October. So no presentation there. And then article four, it says recreation budget, I'm probably gonna update that to reflect that it's, this is really country club-related or golf club-related. This is an additional seven thousand dollars for, to fund credit card fees. We actually had this last year as well. So additional fees that, that the town pays for the use of credit cards was, was used more, credit cards were used more, and so the fees were higher than we had anticipated.
And this is typically associated with increase in revenue, the golf course, right? They've got more people using the golf course, so.
Right. And so, and this would be funded out of.
Enterprise fund, right?
I would like a presentation.
Yeah.
I mean, because I think they're right, because the initial perception would be, wait a second, why is the town paying seven thousand dollars for fees? And there's a revolving fund here that, I mean, an enterprise fund that's involved. So.
Right.
So.
But the fees come from, we have to pay the credit card company for accepting credit cards, just like every merchant has to pay.
Yeah, but those merchants pass it along to the consumer, not to the.
I don't.
Not always.
Well, also, 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 we have to, we would have to pay it anyway.
Yeah, we have to pay it.
Appropriate it anyway.
That, that's, that's what I, that's what I.
Yes.
I, I really telling us.
Yeah, so, but we can, we can talk about.
So we still collect it.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, all right, so we'll add that one.
I think with a little update on how the golf course is doing this summer, I know they don't, you know, know.
Article five is the cable TV budget. That's just an adjustment based on how much money we're receiving per our contract. Anybody?
No.
No, okay. The settlement funds, which we've also talked about coming out of the litigation with one twenty-nine East Main Street.
Nope.
No. It's your article, so I guess that makes sense.
If we come talk about it.
The opioid settlement funds. So again, this is the money coming in from the opioid settlements, comes into the general fund and needs to be appropriated into an article to be used under the purposes for which opioid settlement funds can be used under the settlement agreements. So.
So I think we're pretty familiar with this as a board, but I do, I do think clarity around how those funds can be used will be certainly helpful. So I think previewing those before town meeting would be beneficial to the article.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Article eight is the public safety radios, so I assume that you would want.
Yep.
The chief's, okay.
Yep.
Although, yeah, I don't need that one, but again.
I think it'd be helpful, because I think it'd be clarified to the community because it's.
Okay.
Article nine is the library building management system upgrade. I assume we'd want.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Article ten is the one we just heard about. So, I was, sorry, for, like, Chauncey, the external loading analysis that Jennifer presented tonight. So I.
I mean, if there's an update beyond what she presented.
Yeah, this was really intended to be your presentation, so.
Yep, that's great.
Article eleven is the high school rooftop units. So this is additional costs related to the rooftop units, which you'll remember was partially funded through ARPA, one point six million. And then there was a need to split the project into two projects to use the ARPA funding, and then this is the additional cost. My understanding is that the bid has not been open yet, so I don't know, I think that this is a placeholder amount.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The roadway acceptance, which she just talked about, this is just part of that process. Okay? And then we have two, I think, yeah, two M-one articles, or M-one zoning articles to establish dimensional regulations through the DPW. You typically would have someone come in?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So thirteen, thirteen. Okay. And then fifteen is the stormwater management, so it could be part of the same meeting with Chris here.
Yep.
And then sixteen and seventeen, you discussed at your last meeting, which are the changes in the bylaw and charter related to the affordable housing responsibilities under the trust.
I mean, unless there have been changes to that, I didn't do a line-by-line comparison, but.
I haven't changed it.
Okay.
There have been changes, there were some questions.
Yep, yep.
So if you wanted us to come in and answer those questions, we'd be happy.
There were questions beyond what we asked, or as you've gone.
That the select board asked.
Oh.
Would, can we discuss the last.
Sure, an update would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. All right, so we'll just schedule those over the next few meetings.
Great.
The intent is still to close the warrant on September twenty-sixth. Yeah, I guess that's it for the draft fall town meeting.
Great.
And at this point, there's no, there's nothing kind of out there that you.
There was some discussion about potential warrant article coming out of the recommendations of the golf club building use committee. After our meeting last night, I think we've decided that there wouldn't be a town meeting action as part of that recommendation. Not to spoil it, but the recommendation would really be an action that, that we would take outside a town meeting, which would really be to create a building committee. So.
Will there be an updated town meeting on the work of that being that, or just to the board?
We talked about it, so, so basically with the, with the, jumping ahead of my thing, but basically what we had requested from, in the charge for that committee, was that they would report back to the select board by October first. So they, we've been working through it, we're prepared to come for that last meeting, so we're scheduled for the agenda for the twenty-sixth to come and give that report. One of the things we did talk briefly about last night was whether we wanted to give any update at town meeting, so we can talk about that as a board after, I think, the presentation there, whether folks think it's relevant or not.
Sorry to get ahead of my skis here.
Yeah. I'll give you more in my comments.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the only one that was, that I know about that's out there. So.
Thank you very much. All right, next item is approve meeting minutes of August eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll move their approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Five to zero. Now we have the town manager's report.
So the reports in front of you, printed, an update on the emergency assistance shelter. So that's specifically talking about the shelter that was planned, that's planned for the Sharp building, something that we've been aware of for several months, that the, the state is converting the Sharp building into a shelter. They are, they continue to anticipate that it would only house twenty families. Previously, I had reported that the shelter was expected to open at the end of this month. Our most recent update is that it won't open until likely October. But I think that there had been, I, I had raised a concern, given the state of emergency that was declared by the governor, as to whether or not we were still anticipating twenty-five. as to whether or not we were still anticipating 20 families, and they have confirmed that they're still anticipating 20 families, approximately 20 families, and there will still, it's expected to be the onsite provider at the shelter. And then, the town staff is continuing to work with the nine asylum-seeking families who are currently housed in Westboro that are not supported, but we just really want to thank the public, I mean, people have really been amazing in terms of, you know, interest in helping, the donations that we've received have really been, you know, well-received, and thank you for that. Also, update on the website upgrade, and then the Boards and Committee Module. So, the website upgrade, we've been working through, Owen Page in our office continues to lead that project. We're anticipating a launch of the new site later this fall, it's looking really good. There's a lot more work to be done. And then, just as a reminder to the board, in the IT budget, one of the new items in there was to pay for the Boards and Committee Module, which that's anticipated to come following the, the website upgrade, because Owen's going to lead that one, too. And that's really a streamlined approach to showing the public where there's vacancies on a board, when people's terms might end, and then really an efficient, a more efficient application process, so we look forward to that. And so, we'll keep you updated on that when we're about to launch, we can show an example of that in other communities as a reminder. For Department Head Updates, Council on Aging, the Summer Tuesday Night Out Program wrapped up in earlier in August, was well-attended throughout the summer, the Senior Needs Assessment has provided useful feedback that they've used to put together some fall programming activity schedule, and then the Senior Center now offers notary services. The Grants, and the Finance Department, we've noted some grants that we've received, so $271,950 for the Mucible Vulnerability Program Action Grants. And then, we've put out some bids for, for various items, including water meter, storm debris removal, the Dog Park Contract, and then the Affordable Housing Trust. In the Library, the Summer Reading Program ended last week in the Children's Room with a kindergarten pep rally for incoming kindergarteners, they heard funny stories from a storyteller and got to do crafts and a tour, a tour school bus, wanting to thank the Westboro Public Schools for providing the bus for that event. The community's invited to the annual Library Open House on Friday, September 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00. There will be live music from the Hip Swears, free pizza, costumed characters, and a session with the library's architects to get an update on the repair project and provide input to them. And the Police Department, the department recently used asset forfeiture money to purchase water flotation devices for all the cruisers as another tool to help protect both the community and the officers during water emergencies. The chief also attended another community meeting at the Dalweb Clubhouse, along with Mike Devlin from SMOC, to hear residents' concerns regarding the Sharp Building. The board was aware that there was a meeting, Mike Devlin unfortunately could not attend, so this is, was just a follow-up for Mike to attend. In the Public Works Department, the DPW welcomed Brendan Cabral to the Highway Division. Recent storms and the associated road flooding serve as a reminder of the importance of stormwater management. The DPW worked collaboratively with the Police Department to address temporary road closures. Issues remain, and we are working internally with other town staff, particularly Conservation, to identify solutions. The DPW met with representatives from the Village at Walker Meadows Association to discuss implementation of the stormwater utility, the meeting was productive, with discussion focused on fees and what the process might be for credits. In Recreation Department, the summer program wrapped up this month, so they had 1,694 registrations across all of their programs, and fall and winter program registrations now open and available on the rec website, and the new cricket pitch should be open and available for play at the end of September. The Town Clerk's Office just processed its 100th Business Certificate of 2023. They also had an influx of notary requests in the month of August, and the street lists are expected to arrive in the office the week of September 5th. And then, Youth and Family Services Office gave out backpacks and school supplies to 156 Westboro children in need. School supplies are still available if any family or child is in need, so please reach out to the Youth and Family Services Office. And then, just as a reminder to the public, we'll be closed on Monday for Labor Day.
Kristi, thank you very much. Now, issues and correspondence from the Select Board. First, first, go ahead.
I'll finish up my, my comments there, but we did have another golf club building reuse committee last evening, and we did vote on a motion that we'll be presenting to the board, that will be in our presentation, we also reviewed the presentation, but as a preview for that, the, the committee is unanimously supporting the full replacement of the golf club buildings, so a tear-down and replacement is what you'll see, and I'm not going to steal the thunder from the committee, we're just finalizing the, the report that will come back with, you know, kind of the process we went through, the rationale, some pictures, a bunch of other things that we did that, that basically drove us to that decision, but I will say, it's been a pleasure working on the committee, the, the committee's been very engaged, and as I said, I think everyone unanimously came to the same conclusion of the, of the next step there, and you'll hear about that at the meeting on 9/26. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you.
No updates I can see from you today.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick update from Sustainable Westboro, so, two things, one is that the committee is, has gone through a process over the last several months of having various different town department heads come in and speak to us and share with us their progress on various different master plan items. We finished that process about two months ago, and reconvened last night for a follow-up meeting, and we're now working towards a presentation in preparation for town meeting to provide an update there as well. I'll also say that one of the other things is that the Planning Board also voted to reduce the size of the committee from 15 down to 13, we were having a little bit of trouble with getting a quorum, so we just, we just shrunk that down.
From what to what, sir?
15 to 13.
That's the master plan, did you?
Master plan, sorry. I figured it's why they did, master plan, sorry.
We'll confuse it, but I kind of pissed off, thank you for asking.
Get going. I didn't have it written down here, master.
Yeah, so, I want to wish everyone heading back to school, I know our teachers are already back, want to wish them a fantastic year, and they do great work, so, teachers, administration, and just a reminder to all the drivers that there's increased traffic, so plan ahead. Don't run anyone over in your haste to be where you need to be, because not everyone, you know, follows the rules about crosswalks and everything else, so just be smart out there. And I just want to remind the public that Westboro Connects is hosting the Westboro for Life Day Connect Thrive Event on Sunday, September 10th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the high school. Lots of activities, continued learning, and clubs, and ways to get involved, and be a great event. And the Patriots game is not on until 4 o'clock, so unless you're tailgating early there, you can drop in. So, 1:00 to 4:00 on September 10th, and you can find out more information at westburrowconnects.org. And that's about it for me.
All right, thanks, Shelby. Yeah, quick, Kristy mentioned it in the Town Manager's Report, the Library Open House is Friday, September 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00. I believe the presentation of the Library Repair Project will be at 6:00 p.m. that evening. If you're interested in the project, please attend, and with that, I will take a motion.
I move to interno executive session, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Department of Public Works Union, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC and Lax Media Mass LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 2285, CV 01281, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court, 19TL 000768, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 1500 Union Street, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE residences of Westboro Station, Northland TP LP LLC at 100 Charlestown Meadow Drive, Worcester Land Court Case Number 22MISC 000445-DRR, if the town chaired, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 7, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes of July 11th, 2023, and July 24th, 2023.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating, litigating, and bargaining position. The board will not be reconvening in an open session after the executive session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes. Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes. We are adjourned, thank you, Westboro TV.